Most precious seven of Father, we thank you for another day in your life. We thank you for your blessings and we thank you for your guidance and your love. Lord, we thank you for once again the possibility of a little rain coming our way. Been so dry for so long that we welcome these rains, dear Lord, and we thank you once again for that possibility. Lord, I ask that you be with us and lead us, guide us and direct us in all that we do, speaking with these men and women as they go about the county of business. Let me pray.
Will you tell me the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Twenty-one, we're in a later scheduled week's county meeting, February twenty-third. We're just after nine o'clock in August, and we can't get the push for the form. Also, a table, county office, and kind of work. And it started, item number one is to read and sign the minutes. I've got two sets of minutes, one is late at night, one sixteen, and one is late at sixteen, twenty sixteen. Anybody have any questions or comments? I need one of those two sets of minutes. Here it does, and we have a motion then to approve those two sets of minutes. Motion made, signatured, all in favor, say aye. And the votes, same time, and that's it. My command. Okay, item number two is independent audit. Jeff Graham, CBA Economy Company LLC, managing fiscal year 2016, independent audit report. And Jeff, would you join us up here, title please.
Thank you. And I'll try to just go through the graphs. My name's Jeff Graham, I think I've met you all, and gosh, we've had a lot of rain, I'll just say. No, I was in Odessa last week and it rained. I've never been in Odessa and it's raining ever, and it's like, this is crazy. But we've had a lot of rain, I know y'all have too. Really have been blessed with it, so it's kind of crazy. I don't remember this much rain since the eighties, it was bloody. Lake Leona was about dry, I didn't know, the next day it was full, so I've never seen it before. It's a nice time. But I've got, I'll go through a, you know, really, I'll refer back to the main report, which is, which is the large report with the half moon on it. But really, I'll just try to go through the graphs, and if y'all have questions, you know, on the numbers or any of the other detail, I will know. One thing we need to go over before we start is, is Gatsby sixty-eight occurred, which Gatsby sixty-eight was really what all governments were dreading, because that's really what Gatsby sixty-eight required, was that you booked your pension liability. And we've had some that have had an asset, actually, but we did have to go back and book that pension liability this year, and that was a little over a million dollars, maybe two. So that's, that directly affected your net assets. It's just the government-wide side, it's not on your fund statements, because it's not a true cash outlay yet, it's just an accrual, basically. So that, that did, that was adjusted this year, how it affected your, your income statement on the government-wide side, as part of it, a little over five hundred thousand of it was an expense. So the other six hundred thousand is basically deferred inflowably, because that's basically, it's, it's payments that were made after the measurement date for that, December thirty, I think it's December thirty-first, fourteen was the measurement date. So any payments made after the measurement date are deferred up here on the asset side. So we'll, we'll see that when we get into these numbers, but keep that in mind, that's a one-time deal. So now that you've got that liability booked, you go forward and you just adjust your liability, your asset, as you go. Most counties, most entities have a liability, I said, you're not the only one that all of a sudden had a liability, you had to pay for your pension liability. And it adds about four pages in the notes, so if you want to go over those detail, we can, and I'll put this, even it's a lot of actual work with that and some other stuff. But that's the main thing as we go through these. As far as property taxes, too, I'll tell you, I've, I've just did an entity that's, that's a lot closer and tighter to the oil patch, and they expect a much larger decrease next year in, in those property taxes. So, you know, I think everybody's kind of on pins and eagles of what's going to happen with the values, basically, you know, as we go along here. And that's going to be the real challenge for, for counties and cities, everybody, really, that's, that's going to be the challenge, is, you know, trying to balance your rate versus your values and having sufficient funds for the county to operate. That's going to be a real challenge. Sales tax, too, all those oil patch areas have really been hit hard, the sales tax is declining, so that's, that's been a real challenge, so. And it's challenging for everybody, the economy is, who knows, we'll see. I'm optimistic, I guess, as far as what's going to happen with you, you see, you know, the investments are kind of going nuts right now, haven't been stabilized, so, so I know y'all are, y'all are doing in your efforts to watch that. Budgeting is extremely important now and after years, I think, for everybody. And just, just trying to make sure you're following those budgets, staying on those budgets, that's of course important, so. Just as my intro, not a pleasant intro, but it's where we're at. Graph two is, we'll go through these real, real briefly. Graph two is your audit opinion, again, it's a clean opinion, there's no problems with the numbers, so nothing new there. Graph three is, really gives you just a general idea of the, of the structure of the report, and there's lots of pages in the report. But just keep in mind, you know, again, the government-wide is, is up front, you've got statements, the government-wide statements are just like the regular business. So government-wide, you, you capitalize all your assets and depreciate them, that's the main difference. Where you have the fund statements, that next section, you expense everything, and that's probably what y'all are looking at, at the fund statement side, because that's cash in and basically cash out. And then graph, page number four, this gives you an idea of your assets' liabilities, and again, this is government-wide, so this is everything you purchased that has been capitalized. And you can really see the assets, the blue, the blue bar, really, since twelve, you can see that's kind of built up, and that's, that's done the same way for a lot of counties. And really, you know, as you purchase fixed assets, that's going to continue to increase, because it doesn't go down until it all depreciates. And really, you had an increase a little over a hundred thou, or a little under a hundred thousand dollars in money between fourteen and fifteen. And really, when you get to, because your investments actually went down because you used cash, because you had over five hundred thousand in fixed assets purchased, I think the HVAC in the basement, you had Mack truck, a Grader, a roller, I think, you purchased a couple of vehicles, so you had some, some purchases this year, but your debt only increased to a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, I think, on capital leases. So you used some cash for a lot of that, which, you know, is a conservative position. So a lot of that, that's where the, really the decline in investments came from, was some cash was utilized there for operations and the paper, some of those.
Jeff, on something like that main record we bought, what's the asset life, what did the coverage?
I think probably seven years, because it was around seven to ten, it was a Mack truck, for that heavy equipment. And, but you did trade some in, you had a gain of about forty, a little over forty thousand dollars when you traded, when you traded in the Mack truck, a roller, and also a naked chipper, I think, if I'm not mistaken. So you traded in the old stuff when you, when you purchased the new stuff, it's your capital leases. And that's the main change, the other, the reason it increased, basically, is because you had this Gatsby sixty-eight adjustment again, and that was, if you look on page, let me show you all the pages, on page ten of the, of the main report here, and that's your statement in that position. The new column, it's, like, right in the middle of the page is, is, it's called deferred outflow of resources. That, that's directly related to Gatsby sixty-eight. It's on page ten of the main report, yeah. There you go. That six seventy-seven right in the middle, that helped increase your total assets. And basically, what that is, is payments, again, that's payments you made for your pension plan after the measurement date, so basically, it's a true pay if you want to look at it that way. I don't know why, you know, in fact, we had to call it deferred outflow of resources, now who really understands all that language? But really, it's prepaid, you know, stuff for your pensions, it's payments you've already made in the underfunds, yes. Now, your liabilities, back on the graph on page four of the graph, your liabilities increased from one point three million to two point four million. And again, it's all related to the pension, you know, if you remember, your pension went up a million, two is your pension liability, so back from ten of the main report, your pension liability is one point two million dollars right there, about three-quarters down that pension liability. So really, if you remove that, your liabilities went down, that's what I really want to point out, because really, your payables went down. Your accruals went up a little bit, but net together, your payables and accruals both decreased. So if you took out the pension liability you had to book, your liabilities actually decreased, which tells me, y'all, if you're watching your liability, you hadn't added a lot of debt, so you didn't, you don't have a lot of debt for accounting, you really don't. You've got those capital leases, I think you added two this year, I think you've got six in total, I think one of those are mature in February sixteen, you got another one mature in November sixteen, so by eighteen, they'll all be matured.
So those are five-year leases, you mean, off the?
Correct. You know, so net, really, your main change is the pension liability, if you look at that, everything else is positive, conservative direction. Graph, graph of, on page five, and that is, that's your net asset, so that's, that's really, you know, if you look at fourteen and fifteen, it went from nine point six million down to eight point seven. Again, it's all the pension liability, you know, and then that shell, that's it, the million, two, we had to book for that. Page six of the graphs. You know, this, this really just tells you, well, where's, where's your net assets, where are they in right now? Because you've got the blue line, which is basically what, that's going to be your capital assets, it's going to be your net investment in capital assets. So we're going to take all your capital assets, net depreciation, less any debt related to those. So that five point two million dollars, that's going to decline, you know, as you buy less fixed assets each year than you did in prior years, you're going to have more depreciation, so that number's going to shrink, and it's going to shift on over to the next column, which is unrestricted. One reason unrestricted didn't go up as much is because, again, the pension liability is, is going to affect it with that. So really, if you take out pension liability, again, your unrestricted net assets would have increased significantly, really. Don't have any restricted, usually, your restricted net assets would deal with the bonds or something like that, debt, payments you had to set aside, so I'm not familiar with it. Page seven of the graphs, and again, this is government-wide, so this is, and this is, if you want to look on page eleven of the main report right here, that's going to be what we're, what we're referring to. And your change in that assets, it's what was a negative four oh three this year, and really, got a, a lot of this deals with how, how this works as far as the government-wide side. You've got to remember, because in fourteen, you know, you bought a lot more equipment, if you think about it, about nearly a million dollar piece of equipment last year, okay, you didn't buy that much this year. Well, you know, on the government-wide side, all that's capitalized, you know, so when you have more, more charges for materials on that road and bridge side, which you had with floods, you had some additional charges this year, you didn't expenditure, that affects you more on the government-wide side, because really, you're expenditure one for one when the road and bridge decreased on the fund side, so cash out, decrease. But you had more stuff that you capitalized in the prior year, which you didn't this year, and that's, that's really, you know, most of that change. You had some increases in some revenues, but overall, that's the main change in the road and bridge area, really, just expended, the type of expenditures, really, more material, a lot more material this year. And I know your flooding did, did some damage on the roads, and that's, love the water, but it's not, it's not cheap all the time, so that, that's your main change. And page eight, eight of the graphs, and really, what this tells you, those blue lines, that number at the very bottom is, is telling you, okay, well, that, that's the amount, the six point nine last year, this year it was seven nine, that's what's, that's what is funded by the property taxes, basically, that's the main thing that's funded. Property taxes, fines, forfeitures, and other revenues, and gain on sale of assets, but predominantly property taxes, that, that's what's funding that. And again, you know, we look at the, you have a million dollar difference, a lot of that's in road and bridge, as far as how it fell, as far as the government-wide expenditures, because again, those materials are basically expensed on this end, you didn't have as many capitalized. And you also had, your grants decreased a little bit, I know you had a hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars last year for the airport road, I think it was, something related to the airport. You had some specific grants and contributions last year. You also had less, I think, in adult juvenile grants in fifteen than in fourteen. You did get the search, I think, the search grant was worth some, around a hundred thirty thousand, so that kind of offset part of that. You know, but overall, your property taxes are holding. The rate actually decreased again, but, but your values are holding, even your mineral side held pretty well in fifteen, so that, you know, that's going to be, again, the challenge in future years, is what's that going to do next year, we'll see. Graph nine, that, that's your, that's your revenue, those are the revenues that just funded that amount, we just talked about on that prior graph. So, so again, the blue line's property taxes, you can see that's predominant, it's actually a little more than last year, you had forty thousand dollars more than last year in property taxes. Fines and forfeitures down about a hundred thousand, it's, it's just a precinct level, just, some of that just happens every year. And then the other, you see the other box, four fifty-six, the little green box, that increased. And again, on the government-wide side, this is, this is really, it's strange how this works, but last year you had more capital leases, and those are taken out of this category, so when you have less capital leases, actually, the other revenue will actually increase sometimes. And so that helped to offset everything after this year, but again, property taxes, that's going to be another tax, that's going to be the predominant, you know, revenue source of the county, and it's held, so, you know, given that it's. Graph ten, now this gets back into your fund balance, again, we go to graph ten, we're talking about cash in, cash out, that's fund statements, basically, how you're looking at that. And you can see that the, the difference between fourteen and fifteen was two hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars, so it was, it was, you know, quite a bit less than on the government-wide side. And again, what happened here, really, the difference, you had less expenditures in road and bridge, really, really, your overall expenditures, I think, decreased about a hundred thousand dollars, but your revenues also decreased, over that, two hundred and fifty or so. But really, the difference is, you had less in capital leases, because on the fund side, you've got to think about it, so if you go out and buy, buy a piece of equipment and you, and you lease it, well, it's a zero effect on the fund statements, because you get credit for that influx when it comes in, and then also, when you're paying it out, you're paying another top. So what happened was you paid more of your equipment with cash, that's the bottom line between that fourteen and fifteen, and that's why it's a negative two, so if you would have had a lease for some of that equipment, it would have been a zero effect, probably, with that, with that, but you basically have paid more in cash for things, that's, that's really what happened this year as far as stuff going up. Still in a good position, you know, nearing four million dollars, close to four million dollars in fund balance. Graph eleven is fund dollars by type, that, that's probably no surprise to y'all, most of it's going to be in the general, the road and bridge, and other non-majors, basically, will just stay flat, it's increased actually, I guess. Graph twelve, audit companies, we didn't have any audit companies, so, you know, good for the rest of there, it's really been clean, I will, I will say, it's a long, long way, I think it really is a really good job.
It worked for six or seven years, you were in.
Yeah, it, yes, it, it really has, and it's, it's really nice. So no findings, and page thirteen, our required communications, you know, we didn't have any disagreements or any, any problems with anybody, really, the only significant thing we had on adjustments was Gatsby sixty-eight, the pension liability. And the only adjustments we had were Gatsby sixty-eight, the pension liability, and depreciation, those are usually the main, we had some others that were small, usually, those two are the largest ones, which I probably don't, not care, but you really probably don't care about depreciation anyway, because there's not a cash basis reality for our, you know, pretty financials up front. No disagreements, no difficulties. And then on page fourteen, new standards, we talked about bad enough, and yet the CPA again, CPA. You know, really, beyond that, there's nothing coming up next year that I think will be overly significant. I was telling David, I think they're, they're changing a lot of the adult juvenile grant requirements, I see they change that every year, but anyway, that's, I think there's going to be some changes this, this year, so we'll be reporting, I think, that's how they're changing it. So that'll be a challenge, it's always a challenge. We did handle the adult juvenile audits as well, that we do, where they're actually in August, I agree, so, you know, other than that, if y'all, if y'all get to the detail and have questions, y'all can feel free to call me anytime, I'd be glad to go over anything you need, I want to go over, we're certain pleased, and happy to do the job for y'all, and are appreciative, so, so thank y'all very much. Thanks for your time.
Anything, Russ?
No, I don't have anything to add, but thank y'all.
Yeah.
You did a good audit, you know, hey.
Well, appreciate it.
Any questions, your comments about the audit?
No questions.
You were a good audit.
Yes.
Jeff, thank y'all so much for what you do for us.
You're welcome.
I know this compilation that you have here, they took hours and hours, days and weeks and months to get to this point today, so.
It's such a learning, so to get it, we appreciate you.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to accept the audit as prepared and presented today by time and capacity? If you may take it, all in favor, say aye. And the votes, same time, if you're not curious. Okay, item number three is to discuss, consider resignation of Wade Howard as eastern county assistant agent. I think we get to vote on this, whether we want him to leave or not leave, or, Sheriff, can't we issue some kind of subpoena or something?
Jeff has to do that.
Well, it looks like we've got a letter here that says your resignation is going to be effective June the seventeenth, and your last in office will be June the thirteenth, and on June the twentieth, you'll start in some other county out in West Texas, so what's up with this?
When opportunity knocks, you've got to answer the call.
Not necessarily.
You do when you know what's behind it.
Well, we don't get to blow on this, or issue a subpoena or anything?
Y'all got to accept it.
Well, Wade, we appreciate the work that you've done for eastern county, I know that our, our program is doing well with you at the county. I got to go out and wash a little bit of the ag day last week, and that's great to see those kids out there, those little kids getting excited by ag. Yeah, and we just gave him the office.
One moment, he just swooped in here and run everybody off, and then he runs off. I figured that out yet.
Andrew, are you going to be able to handle this for the next three or four years before we find somebody to run?
Yeah, sorry, I ran Wade off.
Got your new place to reside over there, and you're just going to go and leave us?
Yes, sir.
Well, I guess we'll take a motion to accept the resignation of Wade Howard as our ag agent here in eastern county.
I'll wait.
Most of you may take it, all in favor, say aye. And I wish you the best of luck.
Thank y'all very much.
Hope you don't get cold up there.
We really appreciate the work you've done for us, Wade, thank you.
Thank y'all.
You bet. Okay, I've got item number four, which is a road crossing agreement. Road crossing agreement is to discuss, consider with westbound water supply on Panera Road two seventeen at precinct three. Mr. Wilson, what do you have there, sir?
Yes, sir, the westbound, I was wanting to get some water for pass on two seventeen, which is by, in the span, that's good.
That's good for you. All right. Any questions or comments on this road crossing on Panera Road two seventeen? All right, and we have a motion to accept the road crossing and allow westbound to do their work out there on two seventeen.
I made the motion.
If you may take it, all in favor, say aye. And all of the ayes, well, and we'll start passing these around here to the side. Okay, item number five is to discuss, consider changing internet service provider for precinct one. Mr. Maxwell, what do you have there, sir?
No, I haven't.
You don't have what you need?
No.
Okay.
We never know when it's going to work and when it's not. Most time in the morning, when I get there, we cannot even get on, I can't take the emails, I can't send emails back to the courthouse. We just, we need something different.
Okay.
It's going to cost just a little bit more for them, for a year, if they can provide a service that would near to you. It's definitely.
Fix the way?
Around the fourth, well, do the seven.
So what's the cost? What's the difference in the cost?
It's, I believe, about seventy-four, something like that. And that's what the, like, in one year, that's, which is not that.
Seventy-four dollars more per year?
What? No.
About?
It's basically, probably about three hundred dollars.
It's about three hundred dollars a year or more, get this all set up.
We're paying about fifty dollars a month right now, with TXO.
Using the same equipment, can't you have to buy something else?
They'll put in all their equipment, it's a hundred, it's a ninety-nine dollar installation fee with the, with your contract. You can go up to thirty here, and it drops to the stop, installation.
Do you have the contract ready that they want you to sign?
Not yet, I don't feel like, we've signed, but this is what we're going to do.
Okay.
I'm not saying we'll just sign for it.
Anybody else have any experience with something like? I haven't, so.
I had it when I was here in town. I've never been in trouble. So you're going there first thing in the morning, and it may be two, three, five, four, you can't sit down. I had to figure out why Loretta's sending me emails and I'm not getting them, and some of them I'm getting days later, and it's not, I don't think it's on my side, because I'm getting everything else.
No, it's on the courthouse side.
Because it, it, it's, I'm not having a problem sending emails to other people. Or sending, like, the FEMA stuff, you know, which is pages and pages and pages to them.
They're receiving it that day, so, but I know...
Directly from your office?
Yeah, from my office over there. But I know, I mean, there's, there's emails she sent me that, that it's three days before I get them. Cause it's timestamp when she sends them, and it's three days before it was up to my office.
Wow.
When it came from them.
Okay, well, on the one that we have today, which is a changing internet service provided for precinct one, do we have a motion to make that change?
I think so.
Second. Most ladies, take it, all in favor, say aye. If opposed, same sign. And I'm curious, and will you grant us the contract wherever you get it, we'll tell you back to the court. Get that all signed up. Number six is, well, first of all, is that everything we need and what we need?
What is that?
Number six is a contract to CoFile Technologies, discuss, consider, execute a contract between CoFile Technologies and eastern county preservation, nine four fifty four criminal minute books. Miss P. October health is here for us.
Morning.
Good morning. How are you guys?
Good, Harry.
Good, good. What do we have here, ladies?
I have a, a contract with CoFile for our record preservation. They have four of our criminal record books, and it is for total of nine thousand two hundred and twelve dollars. And I have eleven thousand in that budget.
Is that through your records management budget or the county budget?
The records management budget.
You're the district?
Yes.
Do you want the line out of them?
Okay.
Ladies, this is one of the items we can use that budget for.
Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments? We have a motion then to enter into an agreement with CoFile for preservation of nine four fifty four criminal minute books, and we'll have to sign the same.
Yes, sir. One second.
Ladies, take it, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. We'll have to... This one here. That one. A little more, give them some, close that one. Okay, anything else? Something more. All right. Anything else in that item?
Thank you. Thank you.
Number seven is a commissary audit. We have a county audit to present review of Dale's commissary records. Let's see what we have there.
This is the commissary audit for the period October through December of twenty fifteen. Janice Henson prepared this prior to her leaving, and I reviewed it and signing off on it. Um, basically, it was a good, clean review. Um, primarily, when we do this, we're looking at financial records, making sure deposits match receipts and expenditures match invoices. We also verify that expenditures are in compliance with government code three fifty one point zero four one five. That's local government code. Um, in the findings, um, dual signatures, it, it's hard for them to get dual signatures on every check. Um, and in this, during this period, there was one check that did not have dual signatures. And they've been working on that, and they're really watching that. Um, one of the other, there was a non-compliant expenditure of nineteen eight, nineteen dollars and eighty cents. Um, a purchase order was issued from the jail budget reimbursing the commissary account for that expenditure. Other than that, they appear to be doing a very good job over there, keeping up with things, and it's really a good, good review.
Any questions or comments about the commissary audit? Okay, we have a motion then to accept the audit as prepared and presented today.
No, that's motion, I'll second.
Most ladies, take it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And that's curious. Okay, next up is item number eight, course completion, file of course completion tickets for the meetings act and public information act, meaning persistent auditor, Brittany Marks. Now, usually we have a test at this point, and we'll ask you, Marks, a few questions, since you have a test. Raise your hand. All right. Any questions or comments on these? And we have a motion then to accept those two tickets of course completion.
I'll second.
Most ladies, take it, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, and that's curious. All right, item number nine is C S C D personnel, discuss, consider payment of community supervision tracks for private personnel after hours of community supervision. Miss P, and also David Cherry, is here. Cherry, you got the grant for it?
I think y'all moved it up to the very end.
Appreciate you going up... Commissioner Raines moving me from number one on the agenda to number nine, apparently.
We'll do what we can with what we have.
I think part of that should have said community service.
I thought we already changed this once for you.
We did. The, the problem is that if they do the Saturday work crew and they have a sick kid one day that week, now they're not getting paid to do the work crew. And so, and obviously, I, I, number one, I don't want them doing it without being compensated, and they don't wanna do it without being compensated.
This is for your deputy, and this is for your personnel that supervises community supervision, making this record?
Correct, right. They take out, one time a month, they take out a work crew on Saturdays up. They did one this past Saturday, I think they had thirty probationers out working. Um, but now, if, during the same time period, they, that, that employee has a sick kid, now he's not gonna be paid for taking that Saturday to go do that.
Do you have one person designated for that, or you rotate it around? It used to, you had one person designated to do that.
I had a part-time employee before, and I, and had come to commissioners a while back and asked to be able to just use an employee and pay him overtime. What has happened now is if they need to take off for any other reason, now they're not being compensated for taking that Saturday and taking the work crew out. And I think it's just the way the policy is written at this point, it doesn't allow...
Well, and when this was brought to court earlier this fiscal year, we did not do a change to personnel policy at that time, but it was approved by commissioners' court. But that's what happens with all, all the people that are receiving overtime, security that works on election day, election personnel that works on election day. If they did not work, physically work forty hours during the week, they worked the additional hours, it's paid at, or we reduce their time off. So, they're not getting additional pay for working on a Saturday or election night. If, if they work, if they had any paid time off during the week, we just reduced...
Holiday anything, work, any policies in that situation.
Right, right. And, community supervision can write their own policy. But I pay according to, and the county pays according to personnel policy. So, what I asked David was to bring that to court, so it was in our policy also. So, it, our policy matched his policy, and I'm paying according to his policy.
Kind of, kinda what the law says is if something's not addressed in my policy, then I'll fall back on county policy. But I would like to, well, it needs to be set up where it's feasible for Loretta's office to pay it out. I mean, or at least to calculate it. If I write a policy, they don't have a way to calculate that, doesn't, you know, it's not what we're after, so...
So, what kind of change do you need, Wade?
Basically, I, and I, I think the way that it would need to be stated is that, and I don't know if y'all want to do it for joint elections and security also who are receiving overtime pay, but that any additional hours worked, and, and very specifically here, election and security, it's for additional hours worked on an election day. Um, and same thing with community supervision, additional hours worked, and you have to help do the phrasing there, are paid at overtime rate.
So, everyone has to stay the same with commissioners' court approval. Like, since I have one deputy that works overtime with court approval, it's paid overtime hours.
Right, and yours is the same way. If, if that deputy has any paid time off during that work week, we reduce the paid time off for the hours worked.
Yeah, we want that same.
Right.
So, do you want to structure something, or do you need some way to change how the process needs to be written in here?
If that would be okay. We have several changes to personnel policy that we need to bring back to court anyway. And if it's okay, and depending on what the court wants to do, do you wanna do it for election personnel, records management personnel and security personnel, or just C S C D personnel?
But for one, we did all of it, just make all the changes at one time, in my opinion.
My opinion.
And you think this is something that needs to be done, to make it match the two policies?
What, to make my, to make the county policy match C S C D policy, yes.
He's got policy that, that gives you the guidance, but we got policy that makes it pay.
Right, I pay according to county policy.
We should have work programs come weekend.
Yes. We, we, well, I mean, we have people out doing community service during the week, but not, they're not taken out by, by...
Not supervised.
Supervised by us. If it's a, you know, we take a group out one Saturday a month, sometimes two Saturdays a month. And, and of course, the other thing, and I think all of y'all understand this, I mean, this, none of this is county funds. I mean, this is...
Right.
C S C D funds, that, you know, I just wanna do it, you know, I'd like to get the approval to... And again, I just, I won't be compensated if they're gonna take their Saturday to take out a crew, and it's, and it's preventing me, it's, it's keeping me from having to go out and look for another part-time employee, which would cost me a lot more than...
Right.
Doing it this way, so...
All right, so, can we have a motion then to allow the changes to the personnel policy to fit what the community supervision needs at this point? And then we'll come back and have the actual language put in there. Do we have a motion that affect? Do we have a second? Motion made, take it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, same sign. And so, whenever the two, you get the language worked out and we decide, if you can, you can have it filed, we'll make a decision on it. Maybe later.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay, item number ten is a nine-one-one update, corporate dispatch update. Uh, don't have anything on, uh, nine-one-one or dispatch either one. Sheriff, anything you?
No, sir.
Okay, and Sheriff's, I don't think there's anything. Well, Sheriff's, I go here, you're in the right place. You move, it's my shirt, don't be moving around like that. Did, didn't we do a, a nine-one-one addressing update?
Yes, she came in this past week.
Okay, okay, good, good, yeah. Anything else on dispatch or nine-one-one, anyone? Okay, I'm William, this is county burn ban. Moving or adopting the burn ban, forced burn ban's off and off for a while. Anybody seen any need to put the burn ban back on?
Leave it alone.
Leave it alone, all right? So, no action on the burn ban, personnel matters, we do have a report here for personnel matters.
Yes, sir. This report is for the period May, been through May twentieth. During that period, there was one full-time community supervision officer, new hire and no termination.
Okay. Full-time community supervision officer retired, nobody was terminated, uh, during this time period. Okay, anybody else have any issues to discuss for personnel? We make a motion then to accept the personnel report as presented.
Motion second.
Motion made, take it, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, and that's curious. Item thirteen is cafeteria plan, Steve Vallow.
Vallow.
Vallow, with Liberty National Life Insurance Company, request administration of county section one twenty-five cafeteria plan and provide operation and security with employees. All right, so, please head to seat and welcome to eastern county commissioner court.
Well, I, I definitely appreciate it.
Sure.
And I found that nothing lightens up a commissioner, court hearing, or, or staff meeting, or corporate board meeting, than an insurance salesman talking about life insurance. Yes, ma'am. Okay, um, so, I'd like to start off by introducing myself. My name is Steve Vallow. I work for Liberty National Life Insurance Company. And on behalf of myself, and two other, I recommend bets, the Desert Storm bet, and the forty-five other agents, supervising agents and agency owners. I'm very appreciative of you guys along these officers to demonstrate how Liberty National can serve the county. Okay, so, Liberty National founded in nineteen hundred, been in business for over a hundred sixteen years. And we follow a very conservative business model to allow us to stay in business that long through, uh, very drastic periods in our country's history, period of dep, depression, several, two world wars, several other wars, uh, economic downturns. By doing a lot of unique things, one of the things we thrive on is not advertising. By not advertising, that allows us to take those dollars and pump it into our policies and make them ultra affordable, so much to the fact that I can walk into basically any business and be able to provide coverage for any employee. So, one of the unique things that we do is we give every employee a discount health savings card. And what that does is that provides that employee access to a network that provides discounts on things like vision hearing, prescription drugs, and even chiropractic treatment. Some of the discounts are pretty significant. Vision around sixteen to twenty-four percent, depending on whether it's lenses or friends, or chiropractic and hearing, and prevent, or a hundred percent for condition of death. Insurance drugs range from thirty-one to eighty-one percent. The next investment we make into any business is an accidental death policy. And what this does is this provides three thousand dollars of coverage to each employee and their spouse, an additional thousand dollars benefit for child. So, with the counting of this size, and I estimate the county workforce to be about a hundred and twenty-five employees, it's about a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar investment that we make into your calendar. Now, typically, the average accidental death policy I give is five thousand dollars, based on a married person or a single parent with a couple, a couple kiddos. So, again, this is a three hundred and seventy-five to six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar investment that we do as a way of saying thank you for partnering with us. Now, we're going to move to our group term sixty-five. This is our flagship product. It's solely unique of its own market. And how this works is, this is a plan that's available for people ages zero to fifty-five. And I'll talk about those that are over, over fifty-five, if interested in it. But this plan works where the employee has the benefits of having a whole life insurance policy, but they don't have to pay for it their whole life because they're paid up in sixty-five. Which unlike other, uh, group term life insurance offering at work, when the employee retires, the salary will decrease. The face value decreases, or even terminates when they retire. the employee loses the most, this is paid up. Also, this and every other policy I'm going to show you guys is completely portable, which means if they decide to retire early, they get to take it with them, and other insurance companies have that available, but we are the only insurance company that allow them to take it at the same group rate. This is a benefit your employees can use and be able to afford to keep even after they So, I mentioned tax savings to the county whenever I first met with the RIS and some other representatives, so the first fifty thousand dollars of group term can be paid for on pre-tax basis. So I want to demonstrate how that can help you and your employees at the same time. If I'm in the, and if I'm in one of individuals living there, and I'm writing them a thirty thousand dollar whole life insurance policy, that person will pay fifteen dollars and sixty-six cents a week to keep that policy, of course, they'll have to pay for that their entire life, and because they're buying it on their own at home, they don't receive any tax savings. Now, if the same person purchases a thirty thousand dollar group term sixty-five, a benefit made available to him here at Eastland County, they'll pay eight dollars and thirty-four cents a week for that policy, it'll be paid up at sixty-five, but they'll have coverage until a hundred and twenty-one. Also, because they're buying it on a pre-tax basis, they'll receive about a dollar sixty-seven a week in tax savings, making it net cost six dollars and sixty-seven a week, now compared to fifteen dollars and sixty-six a week over spent in a year, that's a savings of at least five million dollars. Now, where the county fits the benefit is whenever you have multiple employees participating in this plan, and my agency has a seventy percent participation rate, that's, that's where the county will see about a twenty to twenty-five percent break on their pocket taxes. Again, that, to me, that's very significant. As I mentioned, with people older, over the age of fifty-five, we have the same type of plan, it's called group term to one hundred, it works the same as group term sixty-five, instead of paying the sixty-five, that person can pay to one hundred, but still have coverage until a hundred and twenty-one. And when they do retire, they get to keep it at the group rate. The next benefit I want to talk to that is available to every employee is our cancer endurance plan. According to the American Cancer Society, one out of every two men, one out of every three women, and three out of four families will be affected by cancer during their lifetime. That's according to the American Cancer Society, but we've all had people close to us or relatives that were affected by cancer. So, with those alarming statistics, many of your employees will have to face the expense of this disease during their lifetime, many of them during working years. Our cancer endurance plan pays in addition to any type of health insurance plan that we have in place. We don't call the health insurance provider and say, hey, what are you guys paying for this person's cancer treatments? This is cash paid directly to that employee to allocate however they choose. On the backside of that sheet, this is the list of benefits that this plan covers, and there's three key words on the backside of this sheet, they are no lifetime limit, for example, hospital confinement, surgery procedures, anesthesiologists, outpatient surgery, attending physician, private duty nurse, hospice, radiation chemotherapy, prescription drug, prescription chemotherapy drugs, and blood transfusion are all no lifetime limits. Obviously, this plan be there for somebody for their first fight, and through their last fight, their third fight, unfortunately, she did not make it through that third fight. But we paid her nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars last year, twenty fifteen, and she was not worried about her final, she was not worried about any type of expenses. We also cover newer experimental treatment regardless of the stage, we pay for transportation, back and forth to BMW, rattling, but we'll also pay for the flight six times a year to Lindy Anderson, or they're going to pay the whole, wherever they choose to be treated. With cancer, this also covers a list of drug diseases, on the bottom you'll see it covers cystic fibrosis, diptheria, encephalitis, multiple sclerosis, and it covers rabies. The next benefit we make available to employees is our accident protector max. I found that this is a really good plan for young families, but it's obviously available to anybody who wants it. On the backside of the sheet, you'll see that it also has an accidental death in this movement, whether insured, if it's accidental, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar payout, if it's by a travel accident like a cruise ship, single, or airplane crash, it goes up to two hundred and fifty thousand. But we're young families, have found the benefit, and as for emergency room treatment, we pay up to one thousand for initial hospitalization benefit, we pay from a hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars a day for hospital confinement, depending on how long the paid coverage, a hundred and fifty the first year goes up to five hundred one year three, and then also for ambulance and transportation, whatever that cost is good. And then last, we have our critical illness protected, and this is certainly not all of the benefits we have to offer, but these are kind of the meat and potatoes that we have to offer. This is a very beneficial for somebody who maybe has a heart attack or stroke history in their family, and want to protect their income, pay up deductible, copay, or any other expense, have coverage available, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, this is how the process works, we meet with each one, each of your employees for a few minutes, we provide each employee with the introductory offers, the non-insurance health savings discount card, and the three thousand dollar accidental death policy. And when we offer those to your employees, we'll make sure they understand that the Commissioner's Court has made them available to them. Then we go through a needs analysis, where we ask them a few questions, and this needs analysis really sums up what their need is, because most of our priorities are, is we don't try to settle insurance whether there's not a need, because the last thing that we want for anybody to have is a burden, we want them to be comfortable with what their need is, and we have that, they'll continue to have the coverage in place. Then we make offers for those with additional needs. The process takes a few minutes per employee, my question to this hearing is, are there any reasons why you would not offer this to your employees?
I just don't want it to be too confusing, we already got Morgan Shake Stick at, to be honest with you.
Oh, really?
You know, with Aflac already coming in.
That's great to hear, because-
I mean, I think I've still got Countrywide, Nationwide, whatever that other one, what was that other one we offered one time? Is that what it is, the guy that was Rooster, or whatever it is? Yeah, yeah, I've still got that.
I've heard about Rooster.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's just, I don't want to say overwhelming, but complicated when you get several vendors in there, and everybody's trying to sell you something.
Yes, sir.
And may I answer that, because we've discussed this with Mr. Ballow, and that is why he's here today, because Liberty National will administer our cafeteria plan for the ability to offer. So, in the last couple of years, we've only had, like, last year we had Demetra here-
Right.
And we had Aflac, and that was it, just because it, it did get so confusing, and, and we have discussed that with him, that if they were willing to administer the cafeteria plan to offer these optionals, that may be something, of course, would-
So, he would take the place of Aflac?
Correct.
And that would give him the duty of doing administration of cafeteria plan, and in exchange for that, he gets up and to sell insurance to employees.
Correct. Now, employees can keep, like you have yours from the previous-
That's been ten years ago, or whatever.
And if they have Aflac coverages and want to keep those-
Right.
They can keep those.
But the, the, the life insurance last year, Demetra and them set that up, correct?
Right, we bid the, the county paid life benefit, and then there was an optional with it also.
Right.
We've discussed that too.
So this will eliminate Aflac from being the cafeteria administrator for the next six years?
Yes.
Are we having issues with Aflac?
I'm going to let Pam address that.
No, not, not now, we're not.
I know that we had issues at one time with the party provider before Aflac, and then when Aflac got started, we had some issues with them, but that's been resolved.
But they have, we have a new person in charge of our plan, and she's, I mean, she did a very good job this year, I didn't have to work the errors and things that we've had in the past, so it was much better this past year.
You offer some tax issues somewhere?
Yes, sir. We offer, currently in Addison, myself and my partner in Dallas. Yes, sir. My partner, Amber, myself, we're opening up an office in Florida.
Okay. What's your opinion, you have, you have Pam build insurance there in the area?
I'm, I'm going to let Pam, because she deals with all of that, I really don't deal with any of it, so.
What's your opinion, Pam?
I'm really in agreement with Robert, I think it becomes overwhelming for our employees, that was one of the reasons we, we kind of cut down to, you know, the Aflac and the, you know, the policies that they, they offer. I don't have any complaints with Aflac right now, I don't know about our employees, but no one's voiced any complaints, any of this past year. I know in the past we've had some issues, you know, when we had several different vendors there, and it got confusing for employees, and last year, we took care of the Aerovac and the Superior Vision enrollment ourselves, so we didn't even have reps there, so all we, like Rhett said, all we had was Demetra and the Aflac there.
But that'll eliminate even her having to come if we do the whole life through him, because that's what we done last year through them, was the whole life, correct?
Yes, but we bid it for two years, and that's the county paid also, so we have to keep that in mind, that the county paid benefit is included in what we bid.
These are employee paid benefits, which cafeteria pay.
Right, right. This is completely-
Yes, sir. That's the only thing we asked to do, is to do, is for the employees that want to provide protection, coverage, which is the headwind, that's deductive, right, and you pay.
Well, we don't need to have two cafeteria plans administered.
Right.
So, does anybody else have any issues with Aflac, or their-
I don't have here, now, we've had it through the school, and we canceled it because we had problems with it, but that's just me, I mean, I, we had problems with Aflac, but I'm not having problems, I wanted to pop dumb ones with it, Tucker wife, whatever it is, and they cut off real quick, I mean, in fact, Jeff quit it.
And I'm not trying to say that we need to replace Aflac, as a matter of fact, it would be so often, and it's licensed insurance agent mistake to even mention it, and many of my clients do have Aflac in place, and they have a top-notch disability program. This is meant to just enhance the county's benefit package.
But we'd be replacing Aflac with your company as the cafeteria administrator, so we got to make sure we do that.
Right, and that would be your, that would be your decision, I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm not here to, to push anybody out to do it.
Pam, do you see any benefit from the different products that we have to sell over what Aflac offers now, is it, would it be beneficial to the employees, in other words, to move to Liberty?
I'm not familiar with the breakdown of like, what the Aflac cancer policy pays for the accident policy, I mean, it sounds, you know, from what I was hearing, it sounds like-
It's not this much.
It's not as much.
I, I, you don't have to say Aflac, it's not this much.
Okay.
This is a better program for it.
That sounds like a, the cancer sounded very, very good. I'm not familiar, you know, I can't tell you a lot.
And I can't, I, I can't remember on, on the other, on that one I've got, it's just, and I'll be honest, you just simply say, no, I'm going to keep what I've got, let me sign the form and go on, than to sit there and listen to somebody try to go back over it, especially when I already at that point had Aflac in the system. I will say, on my, my cancer, they paid, Aflac paid, I mean, so did, whatever his name was.
That's good, that's very good, that is, that's very good, definitely.
But, I, I, the thing is, is, is you, you, you keep throwing stuff out in front of them, it's switching air every year, you, you're going to have problems with the hundred and some, I mean, Pam gets enough phone calls without us generating extra phone calls over insurance.
Well, and that's where I give those employees our information.
Right.
If they have something like with a qualified status change, marriage, birth of a child, et cetera, they are fully aware that they need to get in contact with our agency, where we can expedite that change or that claim to them.
So they call the employee, would make direct to your office-
Yes, sir.
-make that change, instead of going through our HR.
Yes, sir.
So that basically wouldn't affect anything we've done, even through Mutual of Omaha, where we bid all that out last year, it won't affect any of that, enough's had off.
And it may be that if y'all don't want to do it this year, when we bid out next year, we can include Liberty National in the biz process, and then if they want to administer the cafeteria plan and offer this, it's just whatever the court wants to do.
Or we could even do what's called a short-term, a short plan year, and so how that would work is, we go ahead and enroll the county, and then we run it up to wherever your open enrollment is, and then we open up a new enrollment that stays in line with your current enrollment.
We do open enrollment in August, so we're kind of getting to court when we're trying to get all that together.
Yes, ma'am.
Pam, is it, would it be a benefit to you and the processing that you have to go through to move to Liberty National over Aflac? I mean, I realize that people have an opportunity to buy different products here from Liberty, and what they're probably getting from Aflac.
It would just be the, you know, usual process setting up, introduction, and all of that.
And your other thing, when you talk about this, you're talking two, two-fold on, on this too, because I don't know that Aflac offers the life insurance type of stuff, just, they just offer the cancer, mercenary treatment stuff, where he's offering a bigger package.
No, they do, I have life insurance.
Do you have, oh, true, true.
And, and the group disability, like you said, is one of the three.
It is, it is top. Speaking of disability-
I wish we had some.
Do you have any other questions or comments, Ballow? Ms. Sunke's offering us a little bit better product package-
Yes.
-than what we have with Aflac, apparently Aflac is doing well for us. What's the, what does the court, do we want to allow him to become the cafe administrator? And that allow him to sell the policies to the county employees?
You're, I, I'm sure.
Well, actually, we can open enrollment during August, yes.
Yeah, but he, your, your program would be basically customized part of the employee to-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So you can offer them A, B, C, D, and E, you pick what you want.
That's exactly right.
Is anybody making a motion then that we allow Mr. Ballow here at Liberty National Life Insurance to be the section one twenty-five cafe plan administrator?
It's better, I'm gonna make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded, gave due discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and that carries. Okay, Mr. Ballow, you're up.
Awesome, all I need to do is get a little more information, so I think you better prepare when I return in August, and then we'll go ahead and get the approval through our office and the key.
And our plan starts October first.
Plan starts on October first, okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay, anything further?
Not that I can think of.
Good deal, thank you.
Appreciate it.
We look forward to working with you in your company.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's see, that takes care, aisle number thirteen, aisle fourteen, does that need a break?
Yes.
You want to make a motion for a break?
I'll make a motion for a break.
Small recess. I'll second that. Did you?
I didn't hear that.
I can hear it a little bit here, I've got to crank that up a little bit.
Sorry, I didn't hear it.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor, for short recesses, say aye.